Cumberland County, North Carolina television.
I'm going to count you in. Five, four, three.
Good morning and welcome to the, uh, good morning, Mr. Faircliff, Commissioner Faircliff.
Hey, good morning, Chief.
To the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, September 3rd, 2024 Agenda. Hope everyone had a great Labor Day yesterday. Uh, and so we will call this meeting to order. I will call on Commissioner Stewart to do the invocation for us in the pledge.
You can bow your head, please. God, we thank you for this day. God, we thank you for the gathering of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners meeting. We thank you for those that have taken the time and able to come out to this meeting. God, we thank you for all the citizens of Cumberland County. We pray, God, for their health and strength. Pray, God, for their families. We pray, God, that you would give us the wisdom to do what is necessary in our county. Thank you for each and every commissioner, for their families who stand by them, to support them, God, as they do the business of the county. We thank you and we honor you in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. I tell you, this is, that's all I get is this, "Good morning." Y'all must have celebrated Labor Day a little hard yesterday. I don't know. I'll tell you what. Uh, but I'm here to present, uh, a couple of awards that we got. I'll tell you what, um, I was at the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, um, our state convention up in Western Salem. And I will tell you that as I was sitting, uh, in the luncheon, uh, that day, that my chest stood out because they gave out awards to counties all over the state of North Carolina, 100 counties. We were the only county that got two awards. So, uh, you know, I was talking junk the whole time that, uh, I was sitting at my table and walking around with them. I walked around with them all afternoon, just kind of showing them off.
Surprise.
And, uh, the first one, uh, is through the WIC office. I'll call up, uh, our Health Director, Dr. Green. And Ray, come on up here. That's the navigator. Oh, no, you're on the next one. I'm sorry. No, you come over here. All right. The North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, in partnership with the Civic Federal Credit Union, awarded the Excellence in Innovation Award for the Cumberland County's Public Health WIC Office on Fort Liberty. And we just moved, too. We're going to talk about that. The award was announced and presented to during the, uh, conference's 2024 Annual Conference, which was held August 8th through 10th in Forsyth County. The award recognizes successful county programs that demonstrate innovative solutions and cost resources savings for county. The Cumberland County Health Department opened a satellite Women's, Infants, and Children's Office on Fort Liberty in March 2023. I remember that rhythm cutting. It was a great day. WIC is a special supplemental food and nutrition education program funded by the U.S. Department of Agriculture, which has been shown to reduce food insecurity and improve health outcomes. Bringing a WIC office to Fort Liberty was an initiative of the Food Policy Council and the Fort Brad, Fort Liberty Public Health Partnership, which is a collaboration with the Fort Liberty Department of Public Health, UNC Gilling School of Global Public Health, and UNC Limberger Comprehensive Cancer Center. The WIC Office on Fort Liberty was intended to better serve the county's military families and respond to needs identified by 2021 Fort Liberty Community Survey, in which more than two-thirds of respondents indicated some level of worry over the past 12 months that their household food would run out before they had the resources to purchase more. As part of the initiative, the Health Department operates a WIC clinic on Fort Liberty two days a week where eligible soldiers, dependents, contractors, and other civilian workers can receive WIC services on the installation. It used to be at Spring Lake, but now it's on.
It's still there, too.
Still there, too. Still at Spring Lake. Uh, doing the citizens out in the county also. Military families receive nutrition education, supplemental foods, breath, uh, breastfeeding, uh, promotion, and referral to other community and health agencies. The Fort Liberty, uh, WIC Office has averaged a monthly enrollment of 1,004 WIC participants, an increase from an average monthly enrollment of 308 during the first quarter Fort Liberty was open. And so, uh, this is the, uh, award, 2024 Excellence in Innovation Awards Program, Cumberland County Fort Liberty WIC Office. Thank you so much for what you do. All right.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Adams. You know, this is certainly a team effort. We, um, opened our, as Commissioner Adams mentioned, we opened our WIC office in 2023, and it really has been a labor of love. Um, the formal leadership, the former leadership at, uh, Fort Liberty really wanted us to be there, and we wanted to be there, too. Um, and it took a while for us to find a building that we could be, and a space that we could be a part of. Uh, but we found a temporary location, and as Commissioner Adams alluded to, we spent about a year in that location, and then last week, we moved to our permanent location. And I think that's really a testament, um, to the hard work of our staff, our team. Um, we're now located in the Joel Clinic, uh, which is right where their pediatric offices are, so it's a really great fit for us to be there. But we couldn't have done that if we didn't spend that year in that temporary location to kind of put the proof in the pudding. Um, so we really are just grateful to the commissioners and to our Fort Liberty partners and our UNC partners, uh, for really helping us to do the heavy lifting of, um, working through all the logistics of getting us on, to have a space there. So, uh, thank you, and we appreciate the recognition and the award.
The other commissioners might want to look at each of these.
I'll try.
And we got the second award, which was the Library Community Navigator. I'll call up, um, Faith Phillips, our Director of Library. And Ray, you come right on up since you're the navigator. Where Ray at? Y'all come right on up. Come on right on over here. And this was given at the same conference, um, and it was the Excellence in Innovation Award for Cumberland County Public Library Systems Communication Navigation Program. The Community Navigate, Navigator Program places a trained community navigator. Right here, all right. Within the Cumberland County Public Library System to work with the library customers who may be experiencing a variety of issues, including homelessness, mental illness, and substance abuse, to connect them with resources. The library's Community Navigator assesses situations, links individual with pertinent resources, and can help address emergencies on site. They also enhance the capabilities of all library staff for providing tailored training from conflict resolution to adult mental health first aid. The program is headed by the communicator, Community Navigator, Ray Santini. I got that right. See, look at this. Uh, who works a flexible schedule to meet the needs of staff and customers at all eight library branch locations. He also partners with other county departments and agencies to improve access to resources beyond the library system. Since its inception in November 2023, the Community Navigator Program has successfully connected more than 100 individuals with resources ranging from housing and food assistance to medical care and reentry support post-incarceration. We'd like to congratulate the library. Uh, it says 2024 Excellence in Innovation Awards Program, Cumberland County Library Community Navigator.
Thank you so much, Chairman and Commissioners. Um, so this program has done so much good for our library customers and for our community. I thought this morning I would share you a story, and Ray has shared with me so many success stories of how he has helped people. So, correct me if I get it wrong. So, um, a few months into our program, Ray met with someone who had been unhoused for about six months. He had gone everywhere seeking help, and he didn't know what help he needed. So when Ray meets with someone, what he does is what we librarians call an advanced reference interview. He gets down to what the person needs. What are the issues? So Ray found that this, this customer had, needed medical care. He couldn't get a job because he needed medical care. Ray connected him with the medical care to get the medicines that he needed, helped him get housing, and helped him be employed. He came back to tell Ray that no one would take time for him, but because Ray took time, he is in a better place now. He's housed, he has a job, and he has connection to the healthcare that he needs to be a successful member, um, of our community and to, to be able to do what he needs to do. So Ray, thank you for everything that you do for our community, and thank you all for your support of this program. Ray is a behind-the-scenes person doing what he needs to do, so I appreciate his work.
Keep it up. One more stories like that. Hey, bring it next time.
And I would tell you, uh, Ray and Faith, uh, one of the things that, um, we've always talked about, or, and Commissioner Booth, is we do these programs and we never hear the success story. So, uh, thank you so much for telling us the success story because that works. The, the library, the WIC office, from 300 to 1,000, it works. Uh, we got to continue to think out of the box and be innovative in the things that we do. I tell you, uh, I know our commissioners will, uh, express the same sentiment. We have the best staff, uh, in Cumberland County, but also in the state of North Carolina, and that was evident by the fact of when I was sitting up there with my chest stuck out and talking junk. So thank you all so very much. Mr. Manager, you had your hand done.
Um, this was the first award that we received from NACO, I mean, uh, from the NCACC. Next, we go strive to get some stuff from NACO, too.
All righty. You know, um, and I, I brought the books back, and I will tell you this. I will tell you that, um, I look in the book and I look at, and Sally's there with me. We sit usually side by side. And some of the people who win awards, the stuff we've been doing for five or six years. And we have, we didn't submit it now because we did it before they started the awards, but we've been doing it, uh, from PIO to the library, to the landfill, and everything. Uh, so we've been doing it a long time. But also, let me tell you, uh, I was also having my chest stuck out. Uh, Wes, Miss, uh, there she is, back in the back. She presented, uh, uh, at the, uh, at the Association on, uh, landfills, and, uh, thank you so very much. She did an excellent job. I was sitting in it. I went to about three or four different, uh, things because some I met. Uh, Sally, we, I know, uh, you were in there, weren't you? I don't know if you were there. Yeah, that's right. You were at the store. This, that one was the room that was the fullest. It talked about landfills and the lack of landfills, and, uh, if you want to say a couple of words, but it was, it was packed. It was jam-packed. Uh, she did an excellent job. Uh, they let me, uh, kind of moderate a little bit. Uh, I introduced the panel and everything. That's all I did was introduce the panel, but she did an excellent job. If you want to come to the microphone. I was talking trash.
So, um, I serve as Secretary for the North Carolina Chapter of NC SWANA, and, um, I serve on the Policy Committee as well. And, um, our group spoke about the landfill desert that North Carolina is facing. Um, we spoke about our cases, our case study here in Cumberland County, all the alternatives that we've explored in our environmental injustice initiatives. Uh, we've gotten a lot of feedback after that discussion, and, um, was proud to be a part. Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. And Ms. Amanda, she did an excellent job. I mean, you all ought to look at it. She did an excellent job. I will tell you, I was so proud, had my chest stuck out again.
Thank you.
As we were sitting in that room. Thank you so very much. All right. Uh, let me, uh, and, uh, I think Commissioner Booth, uh, saw us cutting the ribbon. The Cumberland County Fair is open. It's open, uh, it opened August 30th. It's through there through September the 8th. Rained a little bit that first day, but I tell you, we still had a good time. Uh, I think, um, Vice Chair Stewart grabbed that, uh, turkey leg and was gnawing on that. That's the picture that we really needed. Uh, and, uh, with so much fun in store, go enjoy the fun. The Cumberland County Fair seeks to provide an opportunity, oh, when they have, um, the theme this year, oh, is race car. They have the race car. They went and got a race car, uh, from down at the track, and, uh, you know, they have to guard it 24/7 because of, uh, how unique it is. So you all ought to go out there, if nothing else, go see that. "The Legacy of the Agriculture Communities in Cumberland County," to celebrate the diversity of local arts and craft, and to promote a safe setting for fun, healthy family entertainment featuring music and animals, and to encourage an environment of friendly competition for all. If you go on PIO was out there. If you go out there, if you go online and look at it, uh, you'll see me riding, uh, uh, having a little horse on there. I got on the wrong horse, though. My horse didn't go up and down. My horse is sat there. Commissioner Stewart's horse was going up and down, and I'm sitting there saying, "I don't understand this."
Says a lot.
It does say a lot, doesn't it? So, uh, so we cut the ribbon, had a lot of kids out there. Uh, and I would say the Partnership for Children, I want to thank them, along with the, um, Lisa Children's and the fair. Uh, they, uh, presented books to, uh, the, uh, school system, Charlotte's Web, to be distributed throughout the school system, and so we, uh, like to thank them also. It was just a great day, uh, on Friday before the rain and the storm came. Uh, but I think, uh, as I was sitting out there, everybody was having a good time.
Today is $2 Tuesday.
$2 Tuesday.
$2 Tuesday.
So you say it's time to go to the fair?
Time to go to the fair. You can save that money and buy a corn dog and a funnel cake.
Well, there's no collard green sandwiches.
All right. With that, we'll go with the approval of the agenda. Mr. Manager, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, uh, Chairman Adams, we would like to remove the update for the Homeless Support Center.
Okay. We will remove that. That's B. All right. Uh, with that, um, I would, uh, move to approve the agenda.
Second.
So moved.
Okay, we got the moved in the second, said beforehand, but we'll take the second. Uh, all of those in favor?
Unanimous.
That is unanimous. That will take us to our presentation, which is our 2025 Budget Highlights Video. I'll call on the manager to introduce this.
Yes, um, wait a minute, I'm trying to. All right. So, um, this year, uh, is this year's budget video, uh, for the fiscal year 2025 budget. Uh, last year was the first year we had the video. This is the second year. And, uh, afterwards, you should have your adopted budget at your desk, and you should have 10 copies of the budget in brief so you can pass out. If you need additional copies, let us know. And I answer any questions after the video, and, um, and recognize some staff.
On June 5th, 2024, the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners voted unanimously to adopt the county's annual budget for fiscal year 2025, which runs from July 1st, 2024, to June 30th, 2025. The adopted budget focuses on continuing the board's established priorities and ensuring the county's ability to address evolving economic and social impacts, as well as anticipated challenges in fiscal year 2025 and beyond. The county manager's key objectives in preparing the fiscal year 2025 budget were to set funding in accordance with the board's priorities and strategic plan, maintain the current tax rate, establish an efficient pre-schedule, and balance the budget by operating within the county's means. In 2024, the Board of Commissioners adopted an updated strategic plan, which included initiatives across five priority areas: healthy and safe community, quality governance, sustainable growth and development, culture and recreation, and environmental stewardship. Major initiatives and priorities for fiscal year 2025 include: breaking ground and starting construction of the new Crown Event Center, which is set to open in early 2027; moving forward with the provision of safe, reliable public drinking water for the Grays Creek community, and working towards the goal of countywide public water; addressing homelessness through the design and construction of a homeless support center; improving government communication with the county's residents and employees; advocating for strategic economic development opportunities, building upon existing efforts to improve employee recruitment and retention; providing the funding necessary for a strong and dynamic public school system; and continuing to support initiatives aimed at improving mental health and public health among the county's residents. Additionally, the fiscal year 2025 budget includes funding to continue the previously approved initiatives of establishing a café at West Regional Library, which will provide employment opportunities for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities; training hairstylists and barbers to have healthy conversations with their clients; encouraging positive health outcomes; opening a childcare center to serve the county's workforce needs; and constructing a new parking deck downtown to accommodate county growth and development. The fiscal year 2025 budget also includes $150,000 for a new initiative to increase access to doula services for uninsured and underinsured individuals. The adopted fiscal year 2025 budget totals more than $582 million across all operating funds, with a general fund total of more than $392 million. The general fund budget represents an increase of approximately $10.9 million, or 2.9% compared to the fiscal year 2024 adopted budget. The budget maintains the county's current property tax rate of 79.9 cents per $100 valuation, with one penny on the tax rate generating $2,581,106. The largest portion of fiscal year 2025 general fund expenditures is for human services at 33%, followed by education at 27%, public safety, then general operations, culture and recreation, and economic and physical development. The fiscal year 2025 budget features increased funding for education, including $89.6 million in current expense funding for Cumberland County schools, representing an increase of more than $2 million from fiscal year 2024, and nearly $15.5 million in operating funding for Fayetteville Technical Community College, along with an additional $1.25 million for capital projects. Outside of the general fund, the fiscal year 2025 budget includes adjustments to several fees within the Cumberland County Solid Waste Enterprise Fund to support current operational needs and the expansion of the Ann Street landfill, which will run out of space in the next six years. Adjustments include necessary increases to the solid waste household user fee, tire disposal fees, City of Fayetteville yard waste rate, and the disposal fee for wooden pallets, clean lumber, and clean logs. The fiscal year 2025 budget supports and advances the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners' strategic goals and initiatives, and continues to meet the needs of the county's residents in a fiscally prudent and financially sound manner. To view the adopted budget, find more information about the budget process, and to learn more about the county, visit CumberlandCountyNC.gov.
Well done. That concludes, um, the presentation of the budget video, and I'd like to thank a few people. I'd like to thank Deborah Shaw, uh, Bud, Budget and Performance Director, and her staff.
You got it right, huh?
Diane Rice, Communication Director, and her staff, and Brian Haney, uh, Assistant County Manager for delivering the video, and their staff. We can't plan to keep doing this each year. We just recently, last week, sent off the, uh, adopted budget for the GFOA Certification, uh, award for approval, and, um, look forward to it. We're starting to plan for fiscal year 2026.
All right. Commissioner Keith, I think you had some.
I was saying, it was well done. Very, very well done.
Right. Uh, thank you all so very much. I think, uh, uh, you know, it goes all the way around from PIO, and again, I told you about the staff and what a wonderful, excellent job that they do every single day. You know, we set policy, but they carry out, uh, carry out that policy, and they do it in an exemplary manner. Thank you all. We got most of our department heads here. Thank you all so very much for what y'all do on a daily, daily basis. When you got seven people like us giving y'all calls every single day, um, I know it gets to be nerve-wracking. Look at the managers, uh, sitting there smiling, uh, with seven different people with seven different ideas. You all do. It's just me? No, I'm the only one calling. Oh, that's that. Uh, it, it is a testament to what you all do on a daily basis. Thank you all so very much. That will take us to the consent agenda. Are there anything to be pulled off the consent agenda? If not, I will entertain a motion to, uh, approve the consent agenda. It's been moved to second. All those in favor? That is unanimous. That will take us to an item of business, which is the grant of additional easement and Cumberland Industrial Center to Piedmont Natural Gas. This has been before us on several different occasions. I think we're bringing it to, uh, uh, Ian, uh, Mr. Morefield.
This is a new one, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, this is a different.
You, you adopted, you, you approved easements to Piedmont back in June. Those, those documents have been recorded, and we've been paid. They discovered that they need an additional 50 by 180 feet strip beside one of these sections for construction purposes only. It will extinguish when the construction's over, and they're paying $1,044 for it, and I recommend an approval.
I take a motion to approve the easement.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
That is unanimous. The revision of the Minimum Housing Code, this is our second reading. We had our first reading.
That's, that's correct. That was, uh, August 19th. It was unanimously approved and moved forward for the second reading.
If I can, uh, get a motion for the revision of the Minimum Housing Code.
Come on.
It's been a second. It's been moved to second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
That is unanimous. I will call on the, uh, Vice Chairwoman Stewart, uh, for our nominations.
The Board of Adjustments has four vacancies and recommends the following individuals for no- nominations: Vicki Mullins, Donald Brooks, Ken Turner, and Veronica Mitchell Roser. The Cumberland County Local Emergency Planning Committee has four vacancies and recommend the following individual for nomination: Kobe Foster for Community Group Represent- Representative, Laura Smith, Emergency Management Representative, Harrison Combs, Law Enforcement Representative, and Marcia or Marcia Tillman Bookheart for Utilities Representatives. The Fayetteville Convention and Visitors Bureau of Directors has one vacancy, and they recommend Nathan Ernst. Ernst. Fayetteville Cumberland Parks and Rec- Fayetteville Cumberland Parks and Recreation Advisory Board has two vacancies, and they nominate Antonia Rintira and David Breeze to serve the remainder of an expired term. The Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee has one vacancy, and they nominate Barbara Brooks.
All right. That will take us to the apartments, which is the apartment of the Chair for the ABC Board.
Um, pursuant to the North Carolina General Statutes, the Board-
Pursuant to the North Carolina General Statutes, the Board of Commissioners shall appoint the chairman of the ABC Board. The ABC Board recommends Terry Thomas as the chairwoman for the 2024-2025 year, and I would make a motion for Terry Thomas as chair of the ABC Board for the 2024-2025 year.
If I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
That will take us to our closed session. I'll take a motion to go into closed session for attorney-client matter pursuant to NCGS
Mr. Chairman, that's three separate matters, one of them involves litigation, Sheriff's Office and Sheriff's Counsel is here for that, I ask that you do that one first.
All right, and we also possibly may want to go in for a real estate matter, so if you can give us that.
Property acquisition.
Property acquisition. 143-3181A. Put your glasses on. 85, all righty. If I can get a motion. If I can get a second? It's been moved to second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
All righty, we will go into closed session. We're back, we were in closed session. If I can get a motion to come out of closed session?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
And if I can get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
We are adjourned, thank you all.